All right, I'm going to declare a quorum. This is the City of Groton Committee of the Whole for Monday, July 23, 2018. I'll call it to order. Patrick, please call the roll.
President, Mayor, Pete Frederick, Deputy Mayor Lawrence Daras, Councilors John Ross, Jamal Beckford, Stephen Sheffield, Finance Director Ron Newhouse, Detective Patrick Exhust for the moment, my councilors, one of your people, Michelle Carter.
Okay, thank you. We're going to start with item number 690, which is the city budget presentation. Carlton Smith, could you? This is the planning and zoning official. We're going to talk about some numbers and revenues and forecasting and things like that that we're looking, that we're going to use from 2017 and then going forward.
Good evening, councilors.
Evening.
I get this report, it's a monthly report. I'm not sure that if you see it, it goes to the mayor's office, but there's an end-of-the-year summary report that goes with this. When I started explaining to the mayor for the, for the end of the year, he said this is good stuff, that we'd really like to see the council see what we do for the year on here. So, I know, I know Heidi had grabbed some, you may have some copies of the end-of-the-year report on there. So, for the fiscal year, we've done estimated cost construction of $18 million, $18.5, and have, these are permits that have been issued, and we've issued 200, we collected $273,394. That isn't the true number of collection as much as, I'm not sure whose it is, as much as what we've issued. We have to do this report in this fashion because we paid the state back the 26 cents per thousand on permits issued. We actually collected, and it's in a spring book sheet, for the year, $296,818 that this is rectified through the finance department for that. That tells us that we're got about, that tells me that we got about half a million to three-quarters of a million jobs in backlog because some of that stuff probably came in at the end of June, and we have to issue, we don't issue the permit until July on there, such as the gas station that you see down the road. That came in the end of June. We still haven't issued the permit, we're waiting for some, some redos in the plants. What's, what's even more understanding is that the number of inspections that are going on with this. So, this year, we've done 1,231 inspections out in the field. This is actually boots-on-the-grounds, in the houses, in the businesses, and that can reflect against last year in 2007 where we did 890 inspections for the year. So, one of the things that, one of the big drivers inside here from last year to this year is the Branford Manor project. There is close to, between this year and last year, 1,400, over 1,400 inspections that are, have to happen down there. You've got 486 units. Each, each unit got a bathroom redo, a kitchen redo, siding and windows, and they all didn't go in at the same time. They didn't program themselves to do that at once. And then the siding outside, so they went in and did a bathroom, got out of the second floor, they went and did all the bathrooms on the second floor, and they came back and they did all the kitchens about four weeks or five weeks later. So, they did, they had their own kind of process to this, but each one of these caused us to go in and to close out those permits because the plumbing was over for the upstairs on there. And as supervisor to the, to the building and zoning office, I'll tell you, Walt and Denise have done tremendous work. Out of those 1,400 inspections, Walt, and the fire marshal also goes out with this on, on those inspections, most of them. Denise has taken all those phone calls and writing up every single one of those papers on there. Not every time does all 1,400 inspection, we sometimes split that up amongst Walt and I, but Walt has done most of the work down there as, as his project. So, the, the point of the, of this, I can go back to 2000, that was '17, 890, 832 was in 2016, and 2015 was 984. So, you can see exponentially, the numbers have increased in the number of inspections that we're performing in, in the field, per average. That's why it took a few years so you at least see what the norm was, or what it may be on there. Is there, is there some questions that, yes?
Carl, what was the difference as far as fees collected from 2018, from 2017?
2017?
Yeah, what's the?
2017, we had $22 million worth of work, of $350,000 worth of permits issued. I gotta, I gotta say it that way because there was probably more money collected on there. Some of that 22 million would have been, some fees not paid for due to the fact that I see city projects, we waive the city, the city fees for our city projects such as the PAF. If there was a school, if we were doing something at a school, or other, Mother Bailey House has another example of where we would waive fees. Inside City Hall here, we waive the fees. So, some of the work that you see in there, it's not captured all in money due to the fact that we do waive those here.
Now, we've collected, within 30 days from June 1st to June 30th, $18 million in those 30 days?
Uh, no, that's a, that's a total fiscal year.
All right, all right, so that's?
Yeah, so in the 30 days, we had $2,500,000, $2,500,000 worth of, of estimated construction value and $39,000 worth of fees collected for the month. So, then the next two lines down are, well, the next line is how many, total permits issued for the month, and then the following line was the total for the year.
So, it looks like we're on pace for close to 40 mil for the fiscal year? Is that?
Well, this is the end of the fiscal year right here. That's, our fiscal year started July 1st, so this was end-of-the-year report on there. So, it's 273,000 issued, but 296, just very shy, 300,000 collected for the year. With those number of inspections, and we, and we, I forecast as well as Ron, who sits down and works with us on some of this, and the mayor's, because he's going to some of these larger meetings that we're having on there, we forecast this to start increasing pretty rapidly in numbers. We currently know Pfizer's has to spend about $5.5 million in construction value before December 31st. We're now starting to see what we call the third and fourth quarter monies. We know we have one project at Electric Boat that has to be running for next March for about 12 million, and there's a boiler, they're going to replace four boilers, a whole main, main plant, heating plant at the shipyard for around 5 million. Those are projects that we've been working on, that we know about, that have not come here yet, but will be within this fiscal year. So, you can start, just put those numbers together a little bit, and you can see 18 million will become 25 and 30 million next year quickly on there. That doesn't include the prep work that's going to happen in the shipyard down in the south yard. With those come the number of inspections that, that happened with that, and those numbers cause us more inspections. And at some point, we, we've talked about having a conversation of needing more man-hours to perform some of these tasks. It's a plan review, it's, there's, there's more items to this.
Is this, is this something that you do by yourself? Is there, do you have assistants, or do you think you need assistants?
Well, I have, as I said, I had Walt Weisick, who's the assistant building official, and myself. That's, that's who the office is, with Denise. Denise is handling the phones, taking the inspection requests, setting up our calendars. This is just one part of the, of the job from here, from the building office. You also have the zoning side, the wetlands, the historic harbor management, ZBA, so there's other partials, other pieces to this. And we're starting, you're starting to see, we're starting it as a staff to see the, those plan reviews come in. We've got two currently in for Electric Boat. For the planning and zoning, they just finished wetlands last month, and we have one for Branford Manor because they're going to extend the trail, the, from Birch Plain Creek on there, and the fourth one, I just don't remember off the top of my head.
So, how much projected staffing would you might need when these projects begin? Would there be folks that you want to bring in temporarily just for specific Pfizer EB to, you know, work that piece for inspection and?
We're, we're currently still waiting for Electric Boat to come back with, with some of their larger projects that, that, these, these ones we've talked about are inch, some of them don't even have anything to do. They had to do this whether they were building a new class of subs or, or not, they have to do these other two projects that I, I mentioned. So, we haven't even, they haven't even kind of given us that, rest of that piece yet to say, here's what we think we need from the aspect of, we'll equate that to monies on there. But it, when you're doing 1,200 inspection a year, 1,200-plus inspection a year with two, with a staff of two and doing the administrative side of it, it starts, it starts to get a little more overwhelming. We're here on Saturdays, we come in early Friday to get Branford Manor open, early in the morning to, to work with him.
And speaking of Branford Manor, has they, I've heard that they have had to slow down operations due to work staffing situations, has that been a?
I think, I think their workforce has been reduced down there due to a, to a set of incidences that we don't, the city has no control on. It's not our, it wasn't up for us to go down and do these items on there, but they, they do maintain a workforce down there. They may not be as moving as rapidly, and the job may take a little bit longer to do, but they are, are moving forward. We opened up 22 accessibility units Friday, by Friday afternoon, which is something new for Branford Manor. They've never had that in their, in their residential side of this. They're made what we call type A buildings, so if someone needs to, the blocking's all in the wall, the right-sized showers are there, the height toilets, they can start putting the grab bars up if they needed on there. Also, inside that same building, they put an elevator in, so it's all, it's all accessible from that side of it, and they put in a fitness center so that someone can come down and may need physical therapy, and does, do it right there on the spot so they don't have to leave.
One of the things that's going to happen in the future, in the near future, is that in order for Electric Boat to start to build for the Columbia Class Building, they're going to need to remove some buildings. So, there's some smaller buildings that are going to be removed, and the reason I want to bring that up is that when they're removed, that is an immediate impact to the grand list for the next year. Now, we're working with the assessor to find out what the value is. When I had a meeting with, we had a meeting rather, with John Burt and Mary Gardner, Mary didn't think it was that big a deal, but she was also looking at the town of Groton. We're looking at, in our fire district. So, you have that, but you're also going to have the fees associated with these permits that are going to come in. So, the fees will allow us to hire additional contract personnel that will be able to do these building inspections and the fire inspections, and that will, that will be offset by the fees. And what that does for, for us, so what I'm looking at now is doing that so that we don't end up having to hire two new people. So, the benefit to doing that is we don't have the long-term effect of pensions and healthcare and those kind of things, the OPE. So, that is where my plan is now, and that's the direction where I'm moving. At least that's where we're forecasting.
I think we do see some additional office staff is also going to be needed.
We, we may also need office staff too, either full-time or part-time office staff.
And, and that's been brought into the space study group also. Not only did he ask the questions of what we currently have, but he also asked us to project out at least five years, so he didn't just make a box, and then next year we say, whoa, we got two more people, what do we go with?
Right, we're looking at potential expansion and then contraction. The expansion initially and then the contraction three and four years from now. And then with the building of the new project, that project is going to be built in an enterprise zone, and the recovery of the tax base is a 10-year, is a 10-year recovery. So, what you're going to have is you have some buildings that are knocked down for the next year, you get the immediate impact for about two, two-and-a-half years, and then you get the new building that's built after that, and you start to get 10% a year, and you're talking about that specific project. In addition, there's other building that is going to be taking place within the city. It may be at Electric Boat, it may be at Pfizer, it may be in other places within the city. And then as they are built, it may impact the following fiscal years, the grand list.
Question maybe for Ron. Would the, I guess, would you estimate the increase in revenue percentage, I guess, for the city based on these numbers overall, or do the, you know, increase in any, you know, percentage as far as the budget goes? With this extra fees being collected, is there?
I think it's going to be a double-edged sword. Anyway, I think you're going to see that increase in permits, but there's also going to be that demolition, so you're going to have that tax base that's going to be renewed. So, I think it's kind of a double, we don't really know where it's going to be at this point. I think that's what the, me and the mayor and Carl are trying to figure that out.
You've seen that once already, and that was at Pfizer. We got a great, you know, part of that, that year that we got $35 million, $35 million in construction value. Part of that was the demo permit on there, so we got a great permit, demo permit, one-time cost. Took us a year and a half to bring it down, but in the following years, you're not getting taxed for it. I mean, it's just a one-time cost that they pay out for that.
So, one of the things that, that we're trying to do, instead of going fiscal year to fiscal year, or election cycle to election cycle, we're trying to look three and five years and even 10 years down the road, because one of the challenges, I think, one of the challenges that municipalities have is not necessarily the expenses, but it's the revenue. So, we're trying to look at revenue and how we're going to have revenue from the permit fees, how we're going to manage that revenue so that any demolition that occurs is softened, that loss of the grand list is softened by the permit fees. Does that make sense? That's what we're trying to do. Do you, do you want, do you have any more?
I do not.
Okay.
That showed this fiscal year, that showed other, other years, the comparable, and just that we're rising in the inspections out there. We do project that we'll be seeing higher construction value cost due to the number of projects that we know we've got currently.
Anything else for Carl? There's no action that comes out of this, this is information only at this point. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Chief, if you could come up. We're going to go to 706. This is the issue purchase order for the annual IMC software support for the City of Groton Police Department.
Yes, sir, this is a, for our software support, it would be a contract with a five-year contract payable and five annual installments. And the IMC system we have has been very good for us. It meets the needs of the department, it can grow with what we need, and this is basically to keep it up and running, any upgrades, or if we have issues that we have to bring somebody in to come work with, we would have this in order to run the, the computers for the department.
Any questions from the council?
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
That was $14,000 per year for five years.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Chief, if you have one?
When will this begin, I guess, once the numbers?
It's, you know, we have the system already, but it, but it, the contract would run from October of 2018 to the very end of September of 2019, and then the, the five-year increments there follow. So, it's a year-to-year, we come to the council because of the amount.
When the resolution comes to you, you'll notice that there's going to be, to request to waive the bid process, and that's because this is sole source, this is the system that's already in place.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions or comments?
So, chief, this comes with support, right? They, they'll come and fix it if something happens.
Yes, like recently, the, the state upgraded the A44 form, which is for DWI. They'll come in and ensure that that's loaded into our system so we would have the most current form that comes in. And anything that they changed, like with, they changed some software, I believe it was two years ago with motor vehicle accidents. They came out and they modernized that, and they did provide the training for our personnel so we knew how to use it.
Any other questions? Now, I need a motion to move this to the mayor and council meeting of August 6, 2018.
To move.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstentions, motion carries unanimously. And it takes us to 707, which is to accept the $10,000 Mercy Management Performance Grant Subgrant Award. Chief?
The, the subgrant award is a divergent revenue stream that comes in and allows us to do technological upgrades, equipment upgrades. We've used the money for smart boards in the emergency operations center. We had chairs in council chamber, I think, from the Carter administration, and, and we upgraded that and brought new chairs in. We use this quite often when we, we set up in here.
And our EOC?
We actually have stakeholders, corporate stakeholders that come in from General Dynamics and Pfizer. You know, I, I believe that we have to chase every penny we can in this money. I'm very aggressive going after grants, and it's a, it's a good for the City of Groton, and bluntly, it's good for the region because we, we have the two largest employers locally, and we have a responsibility with them here.
Any questions? Now, and take a motion to move this to the mayor and council meeting of August 6, 2018.
So much.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion?
Thank you for doing this.
Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstentions, motion carries unanimously. Moves this to 708, accept the grant award from State of Connecticut DESPP Nuclear Safety Emergency Program for Equipment and Resource Allocation Reimbursements. Chief?
What we pursued is a, we pay a stipend to the emergency management director. We pursued one quarter of the EMD's salary from the, the state so that, you know, there wouldn't be any expense to a local taxpayer. We've gone with system upgrades. One thing we looked at was camera systems within the municipal building and upgrading security within the municipal building. What we're looking at now is we're doing a system upgrade where we're going with portable radios for the police department, and we're hoping to, we have, our equipment in years past, we've not upgraded it like we should have, and I'm going to chase revenue streams to, that equipment.
It's modern.
Yeah, there'll be 800 megapits capability, which could grow with it, but radio system, should we look at something else down the road? And again, it'll be a, a system upgrade of equipment at no expense to Groton City taxpayers.
Any questions for the chief? Counselor Russell?
I'm sorry, I'm having a really hard time hearing in here, so I'm going to ask a question that you may have already answered. The one quarter of the EDM's salary, explain that.
The, the emergency manager director gets a stipend of 6,000 a year, and we pursued a quarter of that to come from the, the state as opposed to the Groton City taxpayer.
Okay.
So, it cut the, the expense of that down, and then the next thing we pursued was the portable radios for the police department.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, I need a motion to move this to the mayor and council meeting of August 6, 2018.
To move.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstentions, motion carries unanimously. Okay, thank you. Thank you, chief.
Thank you, chief.
Okay, we're going to move to 561, which is Groton Utilities Financial's Director, hey, excuse me.
I believe you have in your package a graph titled GU Total Electric Operating Revenues. The light blue graph, I guess. So, there's been recent discussion and concerns over how revenues affect the company overall. So, we concentrated on the electric portion of the business, and we decided to chart out 10 years' worth of revenues. And we said, well, geez, the company's doing as well now as it was doing ever in the past, so how do we show that the revenues have no effect on the business? So, David and I talked, and we said, well, geez, let's just show our largest bill. So, the revenues is the top of the light blue bars. You can see in 2018, that was 71,000, 72,000, 2009, and in the last two years, it's 55 million and then 54 million. So, that's actually quite a decrease, but in the same amount of time, you can see that our wholesale electric bill went from 58 and 55 million all the way down to 35 and 33 million. So, we said, well, geez, our wholesale electric costs are going down at least as much as our revenue, actually more. Leaving another thing, we said, well, geez, let's chart out the operating earnings to see what the difference is, because that's really showing what the health of the company is. And you can see back 10 years ago, the operating earnings were $1 million, and you can see in most recent history, it's been more than $3 million. And you can see it's usually somewhere in the $3 million range. There was an anomaly for a couple of years there in the middle where it was a bit higher. That was actually a revenue stream coming from CMEC at the time. That was the, what do we call it? That was the?
Equity, equity distribution.
That was the equity distributions. For three years, that was the equity distributions that were turning. They came back in cash form during those years. So, pretty much the electric portion of the business keeps its operating earnings in the low-to-mid $3 million a year range. And it was funny, because when David did this presentation, he goes, well, you know, we're, we're paid to operate the business and keep everything pretty good. He goes, you know, what you really want to look at when you're looking at an operating company is you really want to make sure that you have high quality, because you want to have high service level, high quality to your customers. And then they go, the other benchmark that you'd use as a general rule would be what overall price is. Are you getting a great quality for a pretty good price? The second graph we'll look at is the price, but I'll, I'll finish with this one before we flip to that. And then the last metric, it, it, they teach you in the governance for municipal utilities is, a municipal utility's purpose is to provide a return for. is, a municipal utility's purpose is to provide a return for its owners, its tax base. So there's also a return to the city that we provide, that has that, as well as a services provided, non-cash return to the city. So he goes, you know, you really want to not worry about the revenues so much as worry about lower revenues actually mean we're charging our customer less. That's hopefully a good thing. The only way you're going to charge them more when you get more and more efficient is to raise your rates, if you think about it. And we want our customers to use as little electricity as possible and to pay the lowest rate possible. So that's counter to keeping high revenues.
So I wanted us to bring this out so we could address the issues about revenue and where we've been and where we're going. Also, when we did our rate, repair, our analysis, repair analysis, we have a set of metrics that came out of that. And so we're going to be looking at those metrics, and we'll be talking about that in the future, about where we are with that, right? Cash on hand and those kind of things. We're going to start reporting that out on a monthly basis here so that you guys can see where we are according to the metrics that we've, that have been defined for us, one by our, and established by ourselves and by this study. So we can track the health of the utility. The other issue is, is that in the past, the councils have not been as informed on electric, water, and sewer, and I want to remedy that. And that's why every month, we're going to talk about those three things that we had to count, committed all. Counselor Shiva, do you have a comment?
Yes. Ron, it looks like, you know, from 2008, I guess 71.75 as the revenue minus 58 is the cost, which basically the profit would be 13 million roughly in 2008. Fast forward to 2018, 54.15 with a cost of 33 would be a profit of 21 million. So basically, the profit seems to be greater now than 10 years ago if this graph sort of sets that up that way. Is that, would that be accurate in some respects, or?
Remember, what we did chart was the cost of the power. That's our largest bill. That delta is cash. The cash goes toward capital injection. The cash goes to pay salaries. The cash goes to replace the trucks, you know, non-bonded capital as well as bonded. If it's bonded, it doesn't affect cash. But non-bonded capital injection to the system, salaries, other bills, other services that we have.
But just the raw data to start, before you start breaking in everything else, you're up 21 mil now compared to only up 13 10 years ago.
Right.
So basically, you have that extra to use for other things.
Yeah, the company is fairly healthy, and that's one of the things that the cost of service study looks at, is are you taking your cash on hand? And do you have enough cash on hand to reinject and reinvest in the company?
Counselor, back?
You know, just looking at the trends of the power cost going down, and, you know, that requires us increasing our efficiencies, right? In order to maintain the same, the same operating earnings, right? I guess my question is, as that power cost goes down, that's what we're purchasing, right?
Right. I mean, there's two ways that that would go down. Less volume, and the wholesale price that we're paying CMEC for the power is less. So we're either paying less per kilowatt hour or, and/or, we're buying less volume.
Oh, gotcha. So let's talk about buying less volume. There was an article in the paper, I don't know, two, maybe three weeks ago, that talked about the LED lights that have been installed in the town. And there was a savings of 27,000 kilowatts, 27 megawatts per, either per month or per year, I forget what it was. But the point is that the LEDs are more efficient, and therefore, you're using less energy. So you're buying less energy. If you look at the energy-efficient appliances that we have now, with the refrigerators and the stoves and things like that, so people are using less energy. So part of this, cheaper energy, but part of this is also energy reduction techniques and energy savings to try to minimize the amount of energy that we as consumers use. So there, you know, that all works together to help drive down these revenues. Counselor Russ?
There was a concern noted in the public recently about all of the, just dropped the word, solar panels, sorry, and how that affects your bottom line. Can you address that?
Basically, when you look at the way the tariff structure was designed, Groton Utilities pays a homeowner that has solar, the same wholesale cost of power that we pay CMEC to that homeowner.
Okay.
So Groton Utilities is neutral to solar panels, just like we are with all distributed generation. That was the way our tariffs were designed so that Groton Utilities' distribution system remains whole, no matter the volume.
So can you also address, please, that, you and I have discussed this, that when we have solar panels, there's no cost to Groton Utilities because they're not buying the power to power them, but there's not a, it's like a neutral balance. So you're not using money to power them, but you're not buying the power that you would normally to fuel those homes or to power those homes. So there's, it's not a negative for the city to have so many solar panels.
No, not at all. Because that energy that comes off the roof of the home goes right out and goes to the neighbors at the wholesale cost of power. So we would have had to buy the power from CMEC, and we'd much rather buy it off a solar panel.
So nobody, GU isn't losing money?
Nope.
By solar panels. Thank you.
It's basically the same with fuel cell technology or other distributed generation that goes in our service territory also.
Okay, thank you.
Debbie, Mayor Gersch?
Is it cheaper to buy the solar energy than it is to buy from CMEC?
It's the same price. We did that by design. Or it's very, it's as close as we can try to get it. We work hard to try to get it pretty close.
Now, we'll tell you something that we need to be concerned about. I brought this up at the Groton Utility Commission meeting because earlier that morning, I went to a Southeastern Connecticut Council of Governments meeting. There, you may have read in the paper where Millstone is trying to bid for this RFP, and the RFP is set up currently by the DEEP and by PURA, that even if they're allowed to bid, the soonest that they will be able to provide power is 2023. And that's not good for Millstone, and as a result, Dominion may decide to close them down. And we may say, well, how does that impact us, and what does that mean to us? If you look at the numbers, Millstone provides 50% of the state's power. So that power's got to come from somewhere. And they provide, I think it's 95% of the green power to meet green initiatives that have been established by the legislature. So the Council of Governments wrote a letter that we all agreed to, to go to PURA and go to DEEP and ask them to follow the guidelines that the legislature had put out and let Millstone play on a level playing field. The final date for public comment was last Friday. So I don't know what is, I didn't follow what happened today for that event, but as things change, we'll keep you, keep you posted. Because remember, Groton Utilities and CMEC, Groton Utilities specifically, does not produce power, produce cell power. That's what we do. We just move it around. So anything else you want to add to that?
Well, if that caused, the wholesale cost of power to go up, you'd see the dark blue line go up, the purchase power variance portion of the bill would kick in, and the revenue line would go up exactly to match it.
Purchase, did you say it?
Purchase power variance.
Thank you.
So the powered portion of the bill is treated as a pass. The Groton Utilities is neutral to it.
Any other questions on this graph? And go to the next, the next chart.
On July 1st, Eversource updated their rates, so we updated the residential bill comparison similarly, just to keep it current. And since we were doing the other chart, I figured we'd pass this one out at the same time. And down the bottom, you can see that GU is currently 23.4% less than Eversource for the typical 700 kilowatt hour residential bill. And it also does the 11.6 less for baser electric power.
And this goes back to one of the three main points. Why do you have a utility? One is provide low-cost, provide low-cost energy. You can see that. Two is the reliability. If you talk to people who are in the Eversource territory and look at their downtimes compared to our downtimes in Groton Utility Service Territory, there's a tremendous difference on the positive side to us. And then the last reason that you have a utility is for the return to the city. The current return to the city is approximately $6 million. There's about $2 million of in-kind return through services. And then there's a little over $4 million of direct cash that is infused to the city of Groton. So that's why, excuse me, we have a utility. Remember, we can make, we can make money on electric, we cannot make money on water, no matter how much we use, but can I make money on sewage? The Connecticut General Statutes do not allow it. And we've looked. So have other people, but we have, we have looked at the Connecticut General Statutes, and they have not changed in a long time. Do you want to say anything? I know I didn't ask you to bring any graphs on water or sewage, but is there anything that you want to talk about water or sewage?
No, actually, Tina could intro the first billing cycle on sewer. We can move from there. And then Tina was going to talk about the rules and rights, if you have questions. That's a different item.
Then let's, Tina, would you mind coming up? Even if you do mind, would you come up anyway? Tina Daniels is the, for those of you that do, I know her. She's the General Manager of Customer Service. And she and her group are the ones that did the heavy lifting for the bills and for getting the changeover to the sewer billing, got that set up. So they're the ones that did the heavy lifting on it, and also are the ones that are taking the phone calls when people are either unsure or unhappy. So that, I'll, whom I turn it over to? You or Tina? We can talk about, does anybody have any questions on sewer? Counselor Russ?
So we've discussed this. There's been a number of questions and concerns about sewer. What is the best way to reach? Who should they reach out to, and what's the best way to reach them?
The best way to reach out is absolutely go to customer service.
Okay.
And what's transpiring right now is if the customer service rep is unable to assist the customer, they automatically will transfer the call to me or to the billing manager, and we'll kind of look at the bill, break it down, and then kind of step the customer through it. One of the things that I've instructed the customer service reps to look at is, especially because it's, people have pools watering their lawns and doing stuff, doing stuff outside, is to look and to see if it's cost-effective for a customer to actually install a secondary meter. And we've had a lot of customers that were proactive that have irrigation systems that have already started the process of getting that secondary meter put in because it doesn't go into the sewer. So they are getting, charged the water charge, but they're not getting charged the sewer charge because it's not going into the sewer. It's going into, going into the ground.
So a secondary meter would only meter the usage outside?
Correct, correct. And it's a single point, so if you had a single point outside of, like, your outside spigot, that's what, that's what it would measure. So it goes through your regular meter, and then the secondary meter is basically hooked into, like, the outside spigot. So you're getting charged the water, and it's basically a deduct. So it says, Tina Daniels used 1,000 cubic feet, 500 went through the secondary meter. She's going to be only charged, you know, the difference between the two for sewer, she'll get charged a full 1,000 cubic feet for water, but she gets that deduct between the two meters.
And can you discuss the procedure of getting that and the cost to that?
So the procedure is, is that we will, if a customer actually contacts us, we'll get him in touch with our project management and our meter service department. And roughly, the meter is roughly about $350, and that is at Groton Utilities' cost. We do require a customer to get one of our meters so that we can actually read it, and it will work with the billing system. There is, they will have to have a plumber come in. The prices vary. I've heard as low as $250, and I've heard as high as 700. A lot of it has to do with the customers plumbing inside their house. I know that we looked at it when we purchased, when we purchased our home, and we had a price like $750, so. And that's kind of why we look and try to figure out and help the customer and say, this is the last three, or, you know, your three months during the summer, your sewer bill effect would be $71. So let's say it is 700. It's going to be a 10-year payback. Is that worth it to you as a customer? And that's kind of how, how we've been sitting down with the customers and kind of stepping them through it. And some customers, absolutely. You know, it is, it is beneficial for them to be able to get a secondary meter.
And right now, people are having sticker shock because they've never gotten a sewer bill before. Now they're getting sewer bills. One of the things that I promised people at a council meeting, and that I promised you as the council, is that during this first year, actually always, but during this first year, we're going to be looking very closely at the sewer charges and at the budget, and is it giving us what we think it is, or do we need to do tweaks? We need to give it some runtime. It's a brand-new system, so you don't want to go in and start tweaking every month. We need to give it a minimum of six months runtime, probably around December, to look at that, November, December, to look at it. Hard to see if we need to look at tweaks and see what the impact to the billing cycle and the billing group is, and then also what it is to the, to the public, and then determine where we're going to go from there. So we are sensitive to it. We hear your concerns, and we are actively looking at it and trying to, we're going to try to make efficiencies where we can. Another thing that we're going to be doing in the bills is we're going to be sending out information on how to be a more efficient consumer. And this year, at Groton City Day, which is the first Friday of August, by the way, when we have Groton City Day, the utilities is going to focus on how to be efficient and water-saving, power savings and electric, or water-saving sewage, and... and water saving, power savings and electric or water saving sewers and electric savings. So that's one of the things we're going to be doing. Anything else?
No.
Any other questions or comments on sewers? Councilor Russ?
I'm sorry. Just the phone number. What's the best phone number for them to reach you?
860-446-4000.
Thank you.
860-446-4000 is the customer service number to call. Guys, remember.
You know, just as second what you said, we may want to wait six months because this is a time period where people are filling up their pools and they're, you know, watering their gardens, things outside. So I wouldn't be surprised to see that, you know, it looks high now.
Right. But one of the things that we've said and I've said all along, we I pulled this out of the the general fund to help with the tax loading. When we talked about the estimate of what the savings would be, we talked about a 2-mil difference. And one of the and if you look at, if you go from last year's bill to this year's bill, which is what most people are doing, that's your actualized savings. And your actualized savings is .64. It's not 2 mils. And you're like, well, why am I not seeing this 2-mil savings? And part of the reason is because we had expenses that we were not expecting last year and we had losses of revenue, one-time loss of revenue last year, and those two things added up to almost 3/4 of a mil. In addition to that, I did not take 100% of the savings out of taxes because I want to levelize the tax load and next year at a minimum, we should either be at a level taxes or possibly be able to lower taxes again next year. And that was that was done intentionally to not, I don't like peaks and valleys on taxes. It doesn't make, it's not good business sense and I'm not going to do that. We moved it out because if we had left the sewer in the municipal budget, the tax rate would have went up last this year by 1.1 mil. We've been talking about this since 2011. This is the right year to do it. It's the right business move and in the end, people are going to recognize and realize this is the right thing to do. It feels a little painful right at the beginning because you're not recognizing a whole lot of savings, but the savings are there. And that's all I have to say unless there's more. Councilor Russ?
I'd say the only other thing to mention is that this allows for planned maintenance where every year we get our budget and we try to scrimp and save and try to figure out where we can cut and it always ends up being maintenance. It always ends up being this vehicle cost or this maintenance or, you know, all the things that can be cut that aren't salary, that aren't insurance, things like that. I think that this will help with that in the long run. And yeah, it's hard. It's hard on all of us and we get that and we understand the concerns. Please give us a call. Please let us know how we can help. But but I think the fact that we're willing to look at it in six months and see where we're at is really important.
And if you're if you're watching this show, we encourage you to come to the mayor and council meetings and even to the committee of the halls. But at the mayor and council meetings, those are the meetings where we have citizens petitions and you can talk to the mayor and talk to the council and express your displeasure. You can also send emails to all the councillors and to me. Our emails are on the city website. And the phone number here to my office is 860-444464103. It's 860-4464103. They don't normally call me, so. So if you have any questions or concern. Anything else on sewers? Okay, Tina, would you like to talk about the Grotton Utilities rules and regs? That's 709 in your books.
The Grotton rules and regulations have been updated to include the ordinance of the the old sewer ordinance, what was it? Of 112. What we did was we actually included the whole ordinance 112 into our rules and regulations. We thought it would be a lot easier to include all of it in there and then as we go forward, take out the information that does not pertain to Grotton Utilities or the WPCA as we go forward. But we thought it was important that it was all included in the approval of this rules and regulations with the utility with the utility commission this year.
So future action is on Wednesday. This will go to the Boswell Utility Commission for a vote. Once they vote on it and voted in the affirmative, then this will be accepted by both Grotton Utilities and the Boswell Utilities Commission. And then once that is done, then in the future date, I will come to you to rescind ordinance 112 since all of ordinance 112 has been incorporated into these rules and regulations.
Is there is there a one-stop shop for that ordinance in here?
Is there what?
I like, oh, is it is it sprinkled throughout the document or is it?
The sewer portion?
Yeah.
If you go to the very, if you look at the table of contents, I think it's section nine. 90% of all the sewer is is in section nine. There are certain portions that we did include in the rules and regulations, like the payments, the delinquent account and some of that stuff that's a utility service for Grotton Utilities, whether it's electric, whether it's water, whether it's sewer. It they're they're going to be treated, they're going to be treated the same as far as like payments, delinquent, late charges. And one of the things is we also took Boswell Light and Power because they had a separate rules and regulations, Grotton Utilities had a separate rules and regulations. And for all practical purposes, it was just, it said Boswell Light and Power and Grotton Utilities. And so we wanted to incorporate it all together. So we have one rules and regulations for both for both companies. And as we laid out, there are certain sections that only are electric, we laid that out and said electric only, if it's sewer only, we put sewer only or water only to help it help with the customers or Grotton Utilities or whoever was looking at it so they kind of know which part pertains to what.
Gotcha.
And we will, we will walk the Boswell Utility Commission members through this on Wednesday so that they can see where their old rules were and where they apply into this so that they compare and they can see that they've been incorporated. Because I could see that if they look at this for the first time and they didn't recognize that they had rules or didn't remember, they could look at it and say, well, why do I have this? I don't have a sewer, why do you have me look at this? So one of the things with the business is to try to streamline the business and minimize the amount of rules and regulations. We're going to have to deal with the nuances with Boswell Light and Power and we'll do But I think one of the things you might be interested in, Councilor Beckford, is to, Beckford, sorry, is to look at ordinance 112 and then look at this to, and this is something I'm going to be doing, I haven't done 100%, but I will be doing this, is to ensure that every section of 112 is 100% incorporated into here so that we don't have outstanding things from the Connecticut General Statute. Because 112 is derived from the Connecticut General Statute.
We also use our attorney to actually, if you do find differences in the ordinance, it was to update to make sure that we were hearing from the CGS approach. He reviewed the document.
Absolutely. Our attorney is the one that reviewed this document. He's also the one that helped us with the ordinance 112. So he is familiar with both documents. And that's why we went that direction. Any questions or comments regarding Utilities Rules and Regulations? At this point, this is for information only. Once this gets adopted, I will then be coming to you at a later date with an ordinance to rescind, I don't know if it's going to be rescind or revoke, I'll have to look at the words, but probably to rescind ordinance 112. Anything else from the council? All right. Our next item is, and that's it. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Tina, Ron, thank you. Is 698, which is the CAFRA overview auditor presentation. I don't think you shouldn't, I don't think you have anything.
This is just kind of a, it was discussed at the last meeting that when Scott was here to kind of keep the council up to date as to where everything is and kind of through the process. It seemed like one of the things that we're going to go going forward and then Scott would come in periodically throughout the process or when requested to kind of give updates to where everything is. So currently, right now, this is just when they're scheduled to do their fieldwork. And this includes Boswell Light and Power and the City of Grotton, so it's they do the audits of both units. It's the last three weeks of August from the week of 13, 820, and 827. The last two weeks of September, 917 and 924. The first two weeks of October, 101, 108, and then the week of 1210. So those right now are what they have on their calendar as times scheduled for Boswell Light and Power and the City of Grotton with their audit staff.
Now, what's the what's the outcome of this? This should for this, after the week of 1012, correction, 1210, what should this council expect?
These are, these are the scheduled dates, so these are target dates that we internally need to hit in order to maintain the hard side of the schedule with them. As we discussed in the last committee of the whole, being short-staffed, we missed some of these deadlines, which then, once you miss that deadline, hard for them to reschedule and get you back in the schedule with all of their other jobs is sometimes a lot harder than it may seem like it should be. So sometimes they can move around where if we're not ready one week or another client's not ready and we're ready ahead of time, they can swap weeks around. But once you miss kind of your scheduled piece, it's hard to get back in their schedule with all of this stuff.
But right now, we have no expectation that we should have any issues meeting these these.
As of right now, we don't. These are, like I said, these are what they've given to me from what I need to know as to when they're coming out. Again, these are Boswell Light and Power and the City of Grotton deadlines. They usually start with Boswell Light and Power those first couple of weeks and then circle out.
Any questions from the council? And again, this was meant as information only, there's no action from this item on the issue. Okay, the last item is 705. Let's accept a donation from Grotton Congregational Church for the Summer Playground Scholarships. That is a $500 donation, so when that resolution comes before you, you'll see a $500 donation from them for the Summer Playground Scholarships that are currently going on now. Any questions on that? All right, with that, I'll need a motion to move that to the mayor and council meeting of 6 August 2018.
So moved.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion carries, unanimous. There is no executive session. I will take a motion for adjournment.
I move we adjourn.
Second. I have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you. Thank you all for coming out.